We're good, we're good. Everybody ready? Okay. Good evening. It's called the Order of the May 9, 2022 Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. Mrs. Worley, would you conduct a roll call, please?
President of the Board, Melissa Regal.
Present.
Clerk of the Board, Robert Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Karen Bradford.
Present.
Trustee Joseph Navarro.
Present.
Trustee Eric Ditweiler.
Present.
Staff Advisors, Dr. Trent Hanson.
Present.
Paula Ford.
Present.
Dave Dubrowski.
Present.
Rosa Santos Lee.
Present.
Daniel Brooks.
Present.
Student Board Members, Priscilla Perez. Show Priscilla absent this evening. Alan Rodriguez.
Present.
Haley Bisbee.
Present.
Erica Garimondo.
Present.
Thank you. And tonight's flag salute is led by Josh Lewis. Mr. Lewis, would you mind starting? Thank you. Tonight's inspirational comment will be provided by Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you. I was just thinking about how it's we've gotten into graduation season and there are a lot of our students, our seniors, who are thinking about dreaming about being a little nervous about what's going to happen. So this quote from Harriet Tubman speaks to me and it says, "Every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember you have within you the strength, the patience, and the passion to reach for the stars, to change the world." And I know that every one of our graduating seniors have all of those things within them. So I hope they're able to bring them out and confidently make that next step.
Thank you. It's a whole new world out there. Mrs. Worley, do we need to mark Priscilla's present? Just tried to come in under the radar and it didn't work.
I'll make note.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go move on to reports from closed session. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, President Regal. In closed session by a vote of five to zero with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to accept the voluntary demotion of employee number 299549. Additionally, in closed session by unanimous vote of five to zero with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Ms. Olga Alvarez as the Director of Student Welfare and Supports. Ms. Alvarez is here. Will you please stand? Also in closed session by another unanimous vote of five to zero with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appointment Dr. Jose Arax as Coordinator of People's Services. Unfortunately, Dr. Arax is not able to be with us this evening, but we send our congratulations to him. Also in closed session by a vote of five to zero with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Mr. Kevin Corrigan as the Principal of Rubito High School. Mr. Corrigan is here. And lastly, in closed session by another unanimous vote of five to zero with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Mr. James Wondry as the Principal of Nueva Vista Continuation High School. And Mr. Wondry is watching from home. So congratulations, Mr. Wondry. Thank you, President Regal.
Thank you. We'll move on to student board members. Dr. Hanson?
Yes, we get to hear from our students this evening. We're excited. Graduation's around the corner. So we're excited to hear what you have to share with us this evening. We'll start with Erica from Rubito High School and just work our way down the table. So Erica, would you like to start, please?
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak one last time on behalf of Rubito High School. Last week was a busy week for Rubito. ASB leadership visited Norte Vista High School to get ideas from attending their rally. On Thursday, we celebrated Cinco de Mayo. Clubs helped out during lunch to set up and decorate the quad. And Ballet de Flócorico performed. All eyes were on them as they danced in their big blue, in their big beautiful dresses. The following day, Friday, we celebrated former Rubito football player Jonathan Gerbey. Jonathan signed with the Dallas Cowboys. Congratulations to him and hope all goes well for him in the future. As for sports, boys tennis won their first playoff match. We also had two track athletes who qualified for CIF last weekend, Riley and Mia. Congratulations to both sports for making it that far. For upcoming events, band and choir are having a concert involving Rubito High School, Mission Middle School, and Pacific Avenue Elementary. This will be held on Wednesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM. On May 12th, there are two events happening that day. There's going to be a senior versus staff kickball game. And after that, there's going to be the senior sunrise. On May 19th at 6:00 PM is Senior Awards Night and the following Monday is graduation for the class of 2022. Thank you to all board members for making my experience as the school board representative fun and interesting. I hope all goes well for each of them and thank you again. As for my fellow other school board reps, good luck in the future and finish strong in high school. Make the most of it because high school will go by fast. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Erica. Haley from Patriot High School.
Good evening, Superintendent Hanson, Cabinet, Board Members, and Trustees. In celebration of Teacher Appreciation Week, Patriots Warrior Spirit hosted a spirit week last week comprised of spirit days coinciding with daily activities intended to show student appreciation for our teachers. Recognizing Patriots most beloved, students joined teachers in the quad during lunch to show support as they competed in a series of games. In support of AP testing, which began last week, AP coordinators with the help of AP Scholar Club organized goodie bags for each of our AP students on campus, preparing and encouraging students as they approach their testing dates. This past Saturday, Patriots Environmental Club hosted a beautification project in collaboration with Keep Riverside Clean and Beautiful, planting a multitude of flowers in the planters bordering Watkins Drive. Concluding our athletic spring season this past week, both boys tennis and Patriots stunt cheer suffered tough losses as they competed in the second round of CIFs. After finishing with a league record of eight to two, by which they advanced to CIF playoffs as the second team in their league, boys tennis was ultimately eliminated by Village Christian last week. Despite a loss to Myrieta Valley High School in the second round of CIFs, our stunt cheerleaders dominated their season, finishing as River Valley League Champions. That concludes my student board report for the month of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Alan, want to share a little bit about Nueva Vista High School?
I have to say, Nova has been a little busy, dude. It's just dumb. Good evening, Board Members, Cabinet, and Community Members. We have a lot of exciting events happening at Nova as our year comes to a close. We are incredibly proud of our Cafeteria Manager, Ms. Ricks. She was one of five people across the nation recognized by Tyson Foods as a hunger hero. She received a $5,000 grant for the food service program and she'll be featured as a cartoon character in the next Tyson K-12 Hunger Hero promotional campaign. Her avatar is on our Instagram page if you would like to see it. We had a blood drive last Friday. We were able to meet or go 60 signups. We are waiting for the final amount of actual donations. Though we are grateful for the opportunity to make an impact in our community and save lives. This year, Nova Vista organized its first pie day for our students. The students were given the chance to throw two pies as a staff member as a thank you to our students who are working hard. Students who are passing all their classes at the end of progress report period were invited to participate. It was a great success. Students and staff were able to celebrate our student success. Students, myself included, with straight A's received the coast of LED lights. Students from the gaming club will compete in the JZ Spring Esports Tournament on Wednesday, 11th, at Harupa Valley High School. Go Aztecs! Our extravaganza was a huge success. Students hunted for eggs and three lucky students found the golden eggs. Nova's office staff had special baskets filled with goodies. Ms. McMinn was recognized at the Riverside County Celebrating Teachers Luncheon as a district nominee for Teacher of the Year. We are super proud to have her a part of our campus. On Friday, May 6th, Principal Galvin attended a CCEA plus model schools gala dinner and award ceremony in Long Beach, where Nova Vista High School was formally recognized as one of California's model continuation high schools. Go Aztecs! We are finished with testing. Under the leadership of our testing coordinator, Mr. Bullock, over 95% of students were tested for math, LA, and science. Staff as well as ASB members, myself included, helped out to achieve this goal. Our amazing career center is hosting our first annual ASIC awards on May 18th. Career students and early graduates will be recognized for their efforts toward graduation, commitment to their future, and/or exemplary performance during the school year. Nova will have one more fun Friday at lunch on May 20th. The theme is Emoji Day and ASB will host fun games and prizes. Our graduation ceremony is on May 24th at Ruta High School. We're excited to celebrate the class of 2022. We're also having senior days on campus filled with fun activities during the last week of school. That's what has been happening around Nova. Thank you again for us and current opportunity. I hope to see you again next year as Nova's board rep.
Thank you, Alan, for that report. And we will finish off with Priscilla today with Harupa Valley High School.
Good evening, President Regal, Trustees, Dr. Hanson, and Cabinet. My name is Priscilla Perez and I will be representing Harupa Valley High School. In our sports news, boys tennis had recent wins against Rubio. Baseball had recent wins against San Bernardino, Indian Springs, and Pacific. Swimming had recent wins against Pacific and Rubio. Congratulations to baseball, swimming, and boys tennis for becoming Mountain Valley League Champs Spring 2022. We also hosted prom, an enchanted evening, on Friday, April 29th. Our student body was excited with 398 students in attendance. We all had a great time dancing and making memories with friends. Our senior class is looking forward to upcoming senior events, including senior barbecue, senior sunset, grad night at Disneyland, senior cement signing, senior awards night, and graduation day. Seniors have a senior spirit week this week to encourage this Friday's grad night at Disneyland. Monday is Marvel Monday. Wear your Marvel merch. Tuesday is Toon Town Tuesday. Wear your Disney ears or hats. Wednesday is Wonderland Wednesday. Go crazy with your hair and socks. Thursday is Tiara Thursday. Dress as your favorite prince or princess. And Friday is Force Friday. Wear your Star Wars merch. Senior Class Council is also hosting Kona Ice Tuesdays, where Kona Ice will be in the student parking lot after school the three upcoming Tuesdays. Avid's kindness campaign was a success. Students came out to the quad and wrote in the quad with chalk uplifting and kind messages. And one of the days happened to be on Earth Day, so there was a lot of beautiful landscape drawings and happy Earth Day. Cardboard box donations were a success and recycling funds will be delivered this week to Operation Safe House, a youth crisis center in Riverside. Write a kind message to teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week was also a success, where students made their teacher thank you cards and notes. ASB Me Teacher Appreciation posters and Avid had a Fun Friday activity where they colored a printed paper of potted flowers and stuck them on teachers' doors. ASB also participated in today's Leadership Innovation Outreach Event at the Riverside County Office of Education. This concludes my report. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, students, for your reports tonight. We want to wish you all the success as you approach graduations and the end of the school year. So thank you again and please express our support to your student body. Thank you.
Sorry, it's broken. Okay, recognize RIM's Avid students, award recipients. Mr. Dubrowski?
Thank you. If our RIM's Avid award recipients could come up to the front so we can say nice things about you. And while they're doing that, RIM's Avid is a consortium of four counties. Right up front, RIM is Riverside, Inyo, Mono, and San Bernardino Counties. And RIM's Avid supports avid programs across the schools of all those four counties. And they also have a scholarship committee. And on Wednesday, April 27th, the RIM's Avid Scholarship Committee awarded 101 scholarships for students in the RIM's region. Students were selected because of their commitment to academic excellence, their enthusiasm for extracurricular activities, their dedication to community service, and most importantly, their ability to face challenges and not only rise above them, but use them as a learning tool. We'd like to congratulate three of Harupa Scholarship recipients, Patriot High School students Noemia Costa, Yessenia Gomez, and Matthew Torre. Congratulations. Matthew, you could just stay standing if you want because you're up next, too.
Recognize Patriot High School and Harupa Valley High School students. Mr. Dubrowski?
We are excited to announce that two Harupa-- oh, wait. First, could Diana Lopez also join us up front? Is Diana here? Okay. We are pleased to announce two Harupa students received full ride scholarships to very prestigious schools. Matthew Torre, Patriot High School student, received a full ride scholarship to Stanford University. Congratulations, Matthew. I like that you wore your Stanford sweatshirt today. And Diana Lopez, Harupa Valley High School student, received a full ride scholarship to Wellesley College. We want to congratulate both students and celebrate their amazing accomplishment. Congratulations.
Thank you. Recognize Citrus Belt Area Athletic Directors Association. Mr. Dubrowski?
Thank you. Is Mr. Legel here tonight? All right, I don't see. Each year, the Citrus Belt Area Athletic Directors Association recognizes athletic directors in schools that emphasize sportsmanship and create a positive learning environment for all student athletes and spectators that attend high school sporting events. This year, JVHS Athletic Director Rick Slagel was selected as a recipient of the Sabada Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations.
2021-2022 High School Yearbook Representatives. Dr. Dubrowski. Excuse me, Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you. Our high schools are here to present yearbooks, so we're going to start with alphabetical order. Harupa Valley with Carrie Bolender, Yearbook Advisor, and Emily Aguilar, Team Leader and Editor. Next, we'll have Patriot High School, Andrew Hinger, Yearbook Advisor. And from Rubito High School, Tiffany Medina, Yearbook Editor, and Johanna Sanchez, Lead Photographer. All right. Thank you very much to our yearbook staff from our high schools and to our board members for agreeing to donate their copies to a student that could use the help. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Recognize individuals who go above and beyond to make a difference in the lives of students with special needs. Mrs. Santos Lee?
Thank you, President Regal. Before I start talking nice stuff about these four people, can I have them stand up and actually come on up here? Thank you, thank you. On April 27th, the Riverside County Special Education Local Plan Area, the Selpa Community Advisory Council, held an end-of-the-year celebratory event to recognize these four wonderful people who go above and beyond and make a difference in the lives of students with special needs with their school environment. This year, the following individuals went above and beyond. We'll start with Susan Viaria, Nurse Coordinator. Susana is knowledgeable, patient, and a team player. She is accessible, easy to approach, and collaborative. She handles students with caring and nurturing approach. She has a positive attitude and never says no to a task. Most importantly, she leads with initiative and puts students' needs, their well-being, and success at her highest priority. Congratulations to her. Carl Stager, our school psychologist. He is an outstanding asset to the teams he supports. He's an expert in his field and can often be seen at meetings reviewing assessment data by memory. He is friendly and sincere with the students and families he works with, and he brings such positive attitude to work each day, each day that it contributes to the overall positive work environment at his site. Carl goes above and beyond for all our students and staff here in Harupa. Melissa Purvis, our student attendant aide. Melissa currently supports the students at the elementary level. She is known for her kindness and willingness to support all students. She is effective in her approach to supporting students with disabilities, whether it is supporting at the elementary or secondary level. She is a team player who works collaboratively to support the needs of all the students. And last, but definitely not least, Maria Neoki Noice. She's our mental health coordinator, counselor, pardon me. Maria supports students at the high school level. She frequently is sought out by staff, students, and families, and works diligently to provide the necessary supports to address students' social emotional needs. Her kind and caring personality make her the perfect go-to for students in need of social emotional support. Congratulations to these four individuals. Thank you for all you do for our students here in Harupa.
Thank you. Recognize site and district retirees. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, President Regal. This is a bittersweet moment that we face each year as a school district wherein we we acknowledge and celebrate and show our appreciation for our employees who are choosing to retire from the district after their long career of service and specifically service to our students and all that they do. So tonight, we have several employees who we will be recognizing and we have quite a few who are here with us this evening. And they will each receive a plaque. Those who are not able to be here this evening, they'll receive their plaque in the next few days, but I'll still call their name. And in the odd event that they happen to have arrived and we weren't expecting them all, I asked them to stand and be acknowledged. So this is a better standing up kind of thing. So I'm gonna stand up. So the first one that we have is one of our elementary school teachers from Trough Elementary School. She served with us for 23 years since 1999. That's Ms. Silvana Diaz. Ms. Diaz, will you please come up?
So much. Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Jackie's good at improvising. Thank you, Jackie. Next, we have another of our elementary school teachers. This one from Camino Real Elementary. She served with us for 34 years since 1987 and I believe is one of the OG Camino teachers, one of the originals from Camino, Ms. Christine Doty. Next is one of our instructional aides and one of our cafeteria assistants. We see that a lot in our classified service where folks make such an impact in two different job classifications, sometimes even three. And this one has served with the district going back to 2003. That's 18 years of service. Ms. Renell Hicks. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Next is one of our instructional aides. She works at Indian Hills Elementary and has served with us for 26 years, going back to 1996. That's Ms. Kristi Johnson. Next is one of our middle school teachers from Miraloma Middle School. She served with us for 22 years, going back to the year 2000. That's Ms. Sally Quintana. Thank you. And this one, I guess we could have asked him to stay up here, too. School psychologist, has worked in the district for just a few years, but I know had a long tenure elsewhere. We've really appreciated his last few years here with us here in Harupa. Mr. Carl Stager. And then last but not least of those who are here with us this evening is one of our elementary school teachers from Camino Real. I believe another OG Camino teacher going back to 1984, 38 years of service, Ms. Julie Steis. So those who are able to be with us here this evening, however, if, as I go through and just briefly read the names of those who are retiring, who are not able to be with us this evening, if they would please stand if they do happen to be here. We'll start with one of our grounds equipment operators. He's served with us for the last nine years from 2013 on, Mr. Melvin Aradondo. Next, one of our grounds workers began with us in 2005, Mr. Pete Ashley. Next, one of our elementary school teachers from Stone Avenue, since year 2000, Ms. Laura Berkeley. Next, another elementary school teacher from Van Buren, since 2015, seven years with our district, Ms. Sabine Cook. One of our secretaries, the high school assistant principal secretary at Harupa Valley High School, had 13 years of service with the district from 2008 to 2021. She retired earlier this year, Ms. Judith Seiper. Next, one of our campus supervisors from Rubito High School, also retired a little earlier this year. Worked with us from 1992 to 2022. That's 30 years of service, Ms. Colleen Drake. Next, one of our middle school teachers from Miraloma Middle School, worked with us from 2000 to 2021, Michelle Gerbino. Next, one of our activity supervisors, worked at Trough Street for 25 years, going back from 1996 to 2021, Ms. Alice Gonzalez. Next, one of our cafeteria assistants, worked most recently at Del Sol Academy, but worked at several different sites, 26 years of service with the district, Ms. Vinnie Halcrum. Next, one of our head custodians, high school head custodian at Patriot High School. Has worked with the district for 20 years, Mr. Jeff Harriman. Next, another one of our elementary school teachers from Stone Avenue Elementary, worked with the district for 25 years, going back to 1997. That's Ms. Lenita Hawkins. Another of our elementary school teachers, this one from Sky Country Elementary, retired a little earlier this year, worked with us from 2001 to 2021, had 17 years of service total as a teacher in the district. That's Ms. Deborah Martin. One of our cafeteria workers, a cafeteria assistant at Ina Arbuckle for a number of years, had 24 total years of service in the district, going back to 1998, Belinda McIntosh. One of our student attendant aides, that's one of our one-on-one aides in special education, 16 years of service in the district at a variety of sites, worked with a variety of students, Mary Peña Inada. Then, one of our secretaries from the middle school, from Harupa Middle School specifically, going back to 1997, and then returned to the district and worked here for 16 years total. That's Ms. Sandra Rainsberry. Next, one of our accountants, important, but kind of behind-the-scenes sort of job, but a very vital person in the district, has worked with us for the last 11 years, Ms. Kristi Rockwood. One of our custodians from Mission Middle School. He's worked at several sites in the district, has worked with us for 17 years, Daniel Rodriguez. One of our instructional aides from Harupa Valley High School, worked with us for over 21 years, going back to the year 2000, Ms. Lisa Salvaggio. Another one who retired just a little earlier this year, one of our elementary school teachers at Indian Hills, had over 30 years of service to the district, Anne Waldeck. Again, this is always a bittersweet moment for the district. We so appreciate all of the work that, and just service that these individuals have all provided, and it's such a pleasure and an honor to work with them, and an honor to be able to be the one to acknowledge them publicly here at this board meeting. We'll make sure that those who weren't able to be here were, are able to receive their plaques. Thank you very much, President Regal.
Dr. Hanson?
Yes, President, I neglected to invite our student board members up. Typically, traditionally, what we do is offer them or provide them a plaque at the end of the school year to thank them for their contributions and for all the hard work that they put in. So I'd like to invite the board to go down, and we will invite each of our student board members up to receive a plaque as well, and I'm sure we'll want to get pictures of that and get that posted.
Do we have Mariana in the audience? Please come up as well. Let's recognize funding for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Mrs. Santos Lee?
Thank you, President Regal. The State Department of Education recently notified the district that Funding for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Grant has been awarded in the amount of $762,445 for ARP, or the American Rescue Plan Local Assistance Entitlements, $54,796 for ARP Federal Preschool, $3,296,937 for Local Assistant Entitlements, $53,135 for Federal Preschool, and $556 for Preschool Staff Development. Copies of the grant award notifications are included in the backup materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize funding for Career Technical Education Incentive Grant. Mr. Dubrowski?
Thank you. CDE recently notified us that funding for the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant has been awarded in the amount of $675,549.
Thank you. Board member comments. Let's go ahead and start with Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, President Regal. Wow, a lot of stuff here. First, I want to thank our student board members and congratulate you on a good year. And those of you that are coming back, maybe see you again. Don't have to, but just a thought. I'd also like to congratulate our appointees, Mr. Cordon, Ms. Alfredo, Dr. Rocks, and Mr. Wondry. Yeah. So congratulations. We, the board has every confidence in your abilities and look forward to success in the future. Okay, sorry, I moved closer here. Above and beyond, we're not here anymore, but congratulations to those folks. Great work. I'd like to congratulate the students, Holly Left, to the RIMS students. So it's, Noemi, Yessenya, and Matthew. Congratulations on all your recognition and hard work. Last week, got an opportunity with Trustee Bradford and Dr. Hanson, Ms. Ford, Mr. Dubrowski, and Mr. Jose Campos to attend the National Prayer Breakfast. Beautiful event here in the city. I think this is our 10th year. I think that's what they said. So I look forward to that every year. A couple of weeks ago, Trustee Bradford and I were at Pedley Elementary with Dr. Hanson. I'd like to recognize one of our teachers out there, Ms. Dina Pelagi, for getting a grant from, I think it's Western Municipal, right? Fertilizer grant, yeah. So I want to thank our grounds crew. You know, it's not just our teachers, you know, our classified folks who are really out there. They were digging the holes and, obviously, our custodians. I can give you all kinds of examples, but it's, they kind of helped move the district forward. Last thing, so last week, two weeks ago, Dr. Hanson and President Regal and I had an opportunity to travel to Washington, DC to advocate for some of the issues in education. It's California school boards, so our first year doing it, and it was fantastic to see the, at the level of government where we were, the top. You know, they really care about education. So Dr. Hanson and I were invited to meet with the vice president. Unfortunately, she tested positive for COVID the day before. So we, you know, we had an opportunity to visit with her staff, and it was a small group, maybe 20 school board members from California. They got to meet, and superintendents, because it was also sponsored by AXA. And we talked about, in our meeting, we talked, we had talking points from CSBA. We talked about special education and the unfunded mandates that exist in special education, and they're aware of that. It's just something we have to continue to advocate for. And also, transportation, talked about transportation. And there were some other things. I know President Regal also can kind of cover some of those things when it's, yes, sir. And that's all I have for today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dipwiler?
Thank you, President Regal. We are poised to wrap up another school year. Board members will go home tonight with academic robes so that we can be appropriately attired when we give graduates their diplomas and actually shake their hands this year. This will be the third graduating class that got the COVID co-curriculum of resiliency. I suspect that it may prove more valuable than any bit of content that got glossed over because of the pandemic. I understand that one of our baseball teams is doing very well. Those players are learning sportsmanship as well as patience. I mentioned these things to stress that schools teach more than just facts. As in prior weeks, there are a couple of gems buried in the consent calendar. On the Board Agreements page, item 7, it says that JUSD is entering into an agreement with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, where we will pay them less than $4,000 for two-way radios that will allow the district to access the county's new Public Safety Enterprise Communication System. Communications are key to managing disasters, and this system was designed to be an interoperable network that supports seamless communications across departments and communities. Such a system will allow us to call for help, even if the 911 phone system is down. While I hope that we never need to use these radios, it is comforting to know that we will soon have them. Also of note is Agenda Item 15, New High School Course Plans. There will be four new courses on the books. Two are about how to be a better student in whatever you're studying. Freshman Seminar in Health takes a whole-person approach to engaging students and becoming better learners, while Academic Success goes beyond the freshman year and focuses on the pillars of social, emotional learning, as well as study skills and methods. Even the best students can learn how to become better classmates and students. I wish courses like these had been offered when I was in high school. I did take a freshman seminar in college, and it was very helpful on multiple fronts. The other two new courses focus on developing skills for immediate employment. The IT Service Technician Course will help students who want to be IT techs, as well as providing digital life skills that will help students who took this class in high school stand out for having a practical skill in the post-college employment environment. The second practical course is in an area related to the local economy. Environmental Horticulture will teach students plant propagation and greenhouse management to prepare them to work in nurseries and farms. After I retire, I want to volunteer in this course. Growing plants is almost as fun as growing lines. You may have heard our teacher say Maslow before Bloom. Abraham Maslow is known for his theory that states that lower-order necessities have to be present before higher-order activities can be successfully completed. Benjamin Bloom lent his name to a hierarchy of cognitive difficulty. At the bottom is wrote Memory, followed by Understanding and Application. Beyond these are Analysis, Evaluation, and Creation. So what teachers mean when they say Maslow before Bloom is that it's hard for hungry kids to learn. Teachers knew this long before either Maslow or Bloom, and schools have been feeding kids since the late 19th century. This is harder than it seems, as the food needs to be nutritious as well as being something kids will want to eat. At the last meeting, the board indicated its support of the administration's efforts to secure funding for a centralized kitchen. I supported this because it will allow us to purchase raw ingredients instead of pre-processed food. This should both save us money and result in fresher, healthier food. Agenda Item Number 22 explains that JUSD is the lead agency for the Pomona Valley Co-op Purchasing Group of 13 school districts who pool their purchasing power to secure lower prices. The combination of lower-cost ingredients and the ability to combine them ourselves will offer, will allow JUSD to offer better food at a lower cost. And these are just a few of the exciting new developments at JUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Navarro?
Thank you, President Regal. As a board member, we have lots of meetings to go to, committees, reports, reading, more reading, more reading. But tonight, nights like tonight are my favorite. I love when we're here, we get to hear from our student board members. We get to honor our retirees to give awards and recognition to all the wonderful JUSD staff. So I love nights like tonight. Like I said, we have a lot of other administrative work to do, but tonight's are my favorite, to be able to recognize the awesome staff that we have in our district. And we recently celebrated Mother's Day, so I just wanted to wish, I have a wish to all the mothers out there. And then I wanted to give a specific and amazing shout-out to the, even though she's a daddy's girl, I want to give a shout-out to the mother of my daughter. She's a great mom, and we are lucky to have her. We also had a Teacher's Appreciation Week. And not only do I want to show my appreciation to all the fantastic teachers we have in this district, I would just like to shout-out to all the teachers across the world. You're doing an amazing job, especially during the times that we've been through. A quote that I like is, "A teacher's job is to take a bunch of live wires and see that they are grounded." I know it's been a long school year. We're almost done with this year, and this reminds me of something I heard from a teacher recently. She said that there are three good reasons to be a teacher: June, July, and August. And lastly, I always like to kind of highlight something that we're doing in the district, and something I had read in the superintendent's newsletter was the Harupa Valley High School Jag Closet. It was, Pecode was honored to lend support and offer their We Care Closet to students of Harupa Valley High School. The students were grateful to the opportunity to be able to choose from a variety of donated items and shoes and clothes, prom dresses, and school supplies from their Jag closet they might not have been able to get before. So kudos to Harupa Valley High School on that one. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bradford?
Thank you, President Regal. First farewell and best wishes to our student board members. You've served us well. Congratulations to our retirees, our student award recipients, scholarship recipients, and our individuals who make a difference. And tonight, I have a lot to share. One of the most important things I want to tell you about is talking with our Career and Technical Education students. During a meeting last week, I heard about how much they've valued their hands-on opportunities to try different they've valued their hands-on opportunities to try different careers, the impacts it's made in their career choices, and the time and money it will save them to get started on their career paths as graduating seniors. JUSD CTE truly is making a difference in our students' lives, and I will tell you more about CTE during my committee report at the end of our meeting. The other important thing I want to tell you about is attending the Hoopa Valley High School FFA, Future Farmers of America, awards banquet last week, and our student board member Priscilla Perez is one of our FFA students. I had forgotten how moving is the opening ceremony as the chapter officers report from various places around the room. And I'd like to read to you as an example of not only what our students learn in school, but the public speaking, leadership, and character building that FFA instills like no other school activity or club that I've seen. As the ceremony starts out, the Vice President calls out to the Sentinel, who replies, "Stationed by the door." The Vice President asks, "Your duties there?" The reply, "Through this door pass many friends of the FFA. It is my duty to see that the door is open to our friends at all times and that they are welcome." Vice President, "Why do you keep a plow at your station?" The Vice President replies, "The plow is the symbol of labor and tillage of the soil. Without labor, neither knowledge nor wisdom can accomplish much. My duties require me to assist at all times in directing the work of our organization. I preside over meetings in the absence of our president, whose place is beneath the rising sun." The advisor asks, "Why is the president so stationed underneath the rising sun?" Vice President replies, "The rising sun is the token of a new era in agriculture. If we follow the leadership of our president, we shall be led out of the darkness of selfishness and into the glorious sunlight of brotherhood and cooperation." This is what our students learn. The other thing I want to tell you about are the scholarships given out that night by a gentleman, a Hoopa Valley FFA dad in the memory of his wife after she was killed in a car accident when she and their daughter were trailering to the annual FFA show in Indio. At the banquet, he said he was so pleased with the three scholarship applicants that he didn't want to decide between them, so he was giving money to each of them. I am so impressed at the quality of leadership that our students are learning and practicing as they grow into adulthood here in our district, and the adult role models that they have in these parents, the teachers, and their advisors. I have to share with you so that you know, it's not just the A through G requirements that our students achieve at graduation. Their education is so much more. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few, a short list, but as, as we're nearing up the end of the year, I just want to thank the student board for coming to each meeting, providing updates to our students. And Eric, I really wish you the best of luck on your adventure, and as you graduate, just embrace these moments and just make the most, I mean, just enjoy them. So when you look back, you're going to have that positive outlook on the past experience. And I hope you all have a great summer. And thank you again for coming. But also, I know that Hoopa Valley High School, the baseball team is in CIFs. Are they still currently? Probably. I know, we have some fans, so I, the parents, some of the parents have sent notices to send updates. They're so excited, and you know, it's infectious that we're kind of curious like what's happening, what's happening. But with so many challenges through the education-changing formatting and the what-ifs and COVID, and they still make it through to get to CIF, so I'm really excited for them to complete the CIF. Also, there's so many different recognitions tonight, those that are retiring, and rules that are being switched. I see Mr. Corden's still here. But congratulations to Olga and Jose, Kevin, and James. You know, I'm so, so excited to see what you're going to take over on these roles and what, what talent you're going to bring to each position. And then Teacher Appreciation Week, yes, that was last week. And I just want to extend my appreciation to our teachers. Like, as I just mentioned, I mean, education has changed completely, and schools are becoming full service. And you think that you're going to just open a book and do the curriculum and have a nice day. And it's really, our staff and our teachers have had to embrace so many of the responsibilities. And so through Teacher Appreciation Week, I just cannot thank you enough, because it is beyond to just opening a book or a laptop. But also Bus Drivers Day was a couple of weeks ago, and I saw that a lot of donations. So whoever is, is your team doing that, Paul? Getting the donations? There was all kinds of gift cards and things like that. So I want to thank the staff for really recognizing them. I mean, that is quite a job to load up a lot of students, monitor the noise level as we know they're not all quiet, and then traffic and safety to get them to school and back. So thank you to our bus drivers. And then, one other thing, yes, as Trustee Garcia had mentioned, we were in DC to advocate. So this is a coast-to-coast program. It was our first year, and we had quite a few board members across the state attend these conferences, but also a lot of networking and receiving support and meet with Congress. And the few that met with the Vice President's staff, that was pretty cool. I didn't make that list, so I don't want anybody to misunderstand me. But the opportunity to meet with Congress. So this has created a chatter when we have a lot of board members come from our state to address mental health, nutrition, transportation, internet services, and the staffing capabilities with, you know, we're, everybody's short staff. So this is something that I look forward to continuing as we have the attention of Congress and, and the Vice President, and so that we can advocate for our students and our staff each year until we have their attention and we can see those results in the classroom. So it's quite exciting, but I want to definitely extend my gratitude to CSBA and Capitol Advisors. Kevin Gordon was present, and he's, he coordinated a lot. It was just a great learning and hope to continue with that progress and then attend those events in the future. And I think that is all I have for the moment. I mean, if we can go on, there's so many people to congratulate as this, the end of the year. It's my favorite time of year. It's sad, it's bittersweet as people are exiting or retiring, graduating, moving on, but it's also exciting. And so I'm going to go ahead and just call for a 10-minute break so that we can just get a breather. If anybody wants to take pictures for people that are, may have stayed around for the awards or retirement, and then we can go ahead and resume at 7:12. So a 10-minute
I'm going to move on to public verbal comments. For those new to the room, I'm going to go ahead and read the disclaimer. This communication opportunity is included on the agenda of each regular board meeting, so citizens may make suggestions or identify concerns about matters affecting the school district or request an item to be placed on a future As a reminder, the governing boards meet As a reminder, the governing boards' meetings are a business meeting of the board held in public, and although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. The Hoop Unified School District Board of Education encourages and invites the public to comment on items listed on the agenda or on matters within its subject jurisdiction. Public speakers have a right to their own opinion, and neither board members nor staff will be responding to those opinions or answering questions. The district's silence should not be mistaken for agreement but simply to avoid legal intanglements and/or to protect the privacy of situations that may involve lawsuits, employee discipline, or dismissal. Please be assured, any serious allegations have been or will be investigated thoroughly. Any response from the board will take place during board member comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak, and comments will be limited to a total of 20 minutes per topic. To everyone speaking tonight, please remember that our translator is providing translation and speak a little more slowly. Thank you. We have three public comments. We will go ahead and start with Sonia Vianetta.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take this time to recognize J U S D parent and child advocate Sabrina Sandoval for having the courage to speak before the Senate Judiciary Committee and discuss the science of why a child over the age of 12 is not able to make the decision to receive a vaccine without parent consent. Sabrina, you are a leader, and we thank you. As I watched the hearing, it seemed so promising that there would be no way SB 866 would pass. The line was out the door of people taking their personal time to speak out against SB 866. Then they went to the phone calls, and 75 minutes of people against SB 866 spoke out. When they went to the lines to hear of people in favor, there were few, and much more people against it. The senator shamed the constituents for intentionally blocking the line and not allowing those in favor to speak. In the privacy of my own home, I screamed at the TV, "That's because no one is in favor." To my surprise and disappointment, SB 866 passed. What I learned is that our government does not listen to their constituents, even though the no vote was the majority vote, and the majority voice, I should say. It was sad and disheartening to see our government wants to assume the parent role. They saw nothing wrong with using a treat-reward system to get our kids to put a foreign substance into their bodies. I remember when I was little, my mom used to warn me, "Never take candy from a stranger." She would warn us kids that they want to harm us, and we did not understand back then. Why would someone use candy to hurt me? Mom, I get it. As a parent, I see who the real predator is. On May 5th, the FDA decided to restrict the J&amp;J vaccine, this May. After taking another look at data on the risk of life-threatening blood clots within two weeks of vaccination, federal scientists identified 60 cases, including nine that were fatal as of mid-March. God only knows what we will learn 10 years down the road after millions of vaccines have been administered. The last thing I want to discuss is my child's self-esteem. Post the relaxing of the mask mandate, what I can tell you is that her skin has cleared up significantly. Yesterday, we were at the Angels game, and my mom said, "Bella's face looks so much better. What are you using?" I turned to her and I said, "She just doesn't have to wear the mask anymore." And yes, she does feel much better about herself. So now that the masks are no more, where is this outbreak that you were so scared of? The massive spreading of COVID that caused our kids to miss out on so much education?
Ms. Vianetta, please wrap it up.
Whatever happened to that? Maybe there will be another outbreak this election. The last thing I do want to say is, I thought it was real interesting that you guys would talk about the VP, because I will quote her. "How dare they? How dare they tell us what we can and cannot do with our bodies?" Thank you.
Sabrina? I was sitting here, and I was hearing the comments from closed session, and I would like to applaud the board and administration. Don't fall off your seats, because this is a positive. The decision you made to remove someone from a site, whether that decision was based on people after people coming to let you know what was taking place at the site or any other reason, it really doesn't matter. But I think this is a good direction so that the community, the staff, the teachers classified can see that you're finally getting it. It wasn't because so many people came and spoke against this person. It was because you did the right thing. The stress level at that site was beyond belief, and I believe if you make sure and put the right person there, you're going in the right direction. However, don't stop there. There are other sites that are having a lot of issues, a lot of issues. I will refrain from naming one site, because I have a meeting set, but the people at the community, the staff of this district are going to see this as a path to being able to trust the board and administration. So keep going on the positive.
Thank you. Bea Tire?
Good evening. Over the last 14 years, I made a personal investment of nearly $15,000 in an association that I believed in and supported. For the last 10 years, I had been 100% involved and committed to my local association. I made a pledge to my fellow warriors. I promised that whenever they had a question, concern, or when they needed a representative to stand by them, when their integrity was in question, that I would be there. I promised to represent each member fairly, regardless of my belief or opinion on what was important to them. A popular CTA mantra I heard over and over again for my association was, quote, "An injury to one is an injury to all," unquote. And perhaps I naively believed these words until I, along with over 100 other members, became one of the injured. When another colleague and I asked our association to speak on behalf of the injured, we were told no, because we were in the minority. Our right to choose whether or not we wanted to receive the COVID vaccination was dismissed, and there would be no local representation, since it didn't fit within the beliefs and desires of those in charge at the highest levels in Sacramento. This puzzled me, because NEAJ strongly defends and promotes the voices and causes of those who aren't in the majority, because an injury to one is an injury to all, unless what you're fighting for isn't deemed important to them. After 14 years of loyal service to my association, I had no other choice but to walk away, as my association walked away from me at my greatest time of need. Although feeling momentarily defeated, little by little, the injured began speaking out, and this group of community members banded together. While the task before us wasn't easy, we stuck together. We began attending local school board meetings. We attended Zoom meetings to collaborate with other organizations. We attended other district's school board meetings, which opened our eyes as we watched our surrounding school boards respond differently to the needs of their constituents. We researched assembly and state bills. And lastly, we wrote letters and made phone calls to our local legislators. It was exhausting, but the commitment to our Be Brave movement paid off, because on April 14th, 2022, cheers of celebration rang out when SB 871 was laid to rest. In closing, I want to thank all of our school board members and my former association. It is because of the fire you lit inside of me that I was determined and encouraged to get involved in the district's school board meetings. I was determined to learn more about the legislative process, and you were also the ones who made me even more determined to fight relentlessly, because I never would have fought as hard as I did, even at the risk of losing my job
Ms. Tarp.
for the personal freedom to choose what was best for my body. Thank you very much.
Administrator reports and written communications. Review approval of 2021-2022 Second Interim Financial Report. Mrs. Ford?
Thank you. The Riverside County Office of Education has notified the district that the 2021-22 Second Interim Financial Report has received a positive certification. Our COE will notify the California Department of Education accordingly. And as mentioned in the backup letter, key assumptions that were used to develop the district's financial reports are average daily attendance, cost-of-living adjustment, COLA, and unduplicated pupil percentage, otherwise known as UPP. The district is closely monitoring all three of those data points, including year-over-year average daily attendance, or ADA, and the UPP that's reported at RP1 certifications. That occurs in December of each school year, and then we also have a P2 report, which is submitted in April of each school year. So again, we'll be monitoring all three of those data points. But at this point, the positive certification letter from Riverside County Office of Education is included in your backup materials.
Thank you. Other administrative reports and written communications. Dr. Hanson?
No, I was going to mention Washington DC and the advocacy that took place there, but you and Mr. Garcia covered that very well. So also just want to recognize our teachers. I know we put out some recognition last year, or last week, but our teachers and all of our staff members who contribute to the betterment of our children and support our students day in and day out. So we certainly appreciate them and their efforts.
Thank you. Board action items. This is in a little bit different order this meeting. Adopt Resolution 2022-44 to authorize the sale of 8621 Harupa Road to Harupa Area Recreation and Park Districts pursuant to lease option agreement in Education Code Section 17230. Mrs. Ford?
Thank you. On October 17th, 2016, the Board of Education adopted a resolution authorizing the district to lease the building at 8621 Harupa Road to the Harupa Area Recreation and Park District. The lease agreement contains an option to sell the property to JRPD for $150,000. This was the amount that the property was appraised for at the time of the lease agreement. Since that time, and given the extensive tenant improvements that JRPD has made to the property and the benefit that the parks and the recreation provide to the district and to the Harupa Valley community as a whole, the district is proposing to use the authority that's under ED Code 17230 to sell the property for the initial appraised value. And so at this time, administration is recommending the board adopt Resolution Number 2022/44.
So moved. I'll second. So first by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Bradford. You know, I'm going to apologize, because I don't think I'm logged in. Mrs. Worley, does it show that we're logged in? It's not? Oops. Not yet. No, it's not even showing to join the meeting. Okay, so I understand we have a question, trustee Navarro?
Yeah, just a quick one.
Okay.
Mrs. Ford, does that money just go into the general fund? Or what is that money then allocated to?
The funding has to go back into capital facilities funds, so it will go into specific funding for improvements to facilities.
Okay. And it's as-is sale? Like, there's no...
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, actually, JRPD did significant tenant improvements to the property. Yeah, about $450,000.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very different, because we would volunteer down there for adopt a family, and it was, it's been gutted. Doesn't even look the same, like some same building. Okay, so let's go ahead and call for the vote. Okay, pass five vote. Congratulations to JRPD. Right number two, Adopt Resolution Number 2022-45, approving the amendment of a joint community facilities agreement with Rubido Community Service District and approving a joint community facilities agreement with Harupa, the city of Harupa Valley, respecting public improvements with the Community Facilities District Number 19 of the Hoop Unified School District. Mrs. Ford?
That was a lot. I apologize. The board previously formed Community Facilities District Number 19. Recently, Century Communities purchased the properties within CFD 19, and they plan to change the property mix and home prices. As such, Century Communities petitioned the district to consider amending certain original terms of the CFD. As previously approved by the board at the April 4th, 2022 meeting, these changes include increasing the district's mitigation premium from 120% to 125% of the Level 1 fees, amending the existing joint community facilities agreement with Rubido Community Service District to allow for funding of sewer and water facilities, and entering into a joint community facilities agreement with the city of Harupa Valley. And that's to allow for street improvements. The proposed amendments have not incurred any cost to the district since Century Communities has provided a deposit to defray those upfront expenses that are associated with exploring this amendment process. Copies of the amended and restated JCFA, Joint Community Facilities Agreement with RCSD and the JCFA with the city are included in the backup materials. So at this time, administration recommends the board adopt Resolution Number 2022/45.
So moved.
I will second.
Okay, first by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Navarro. Any questions? Trustee Garcia?
Thank you, President Regal. The only question I had, Mrs. Ford, is, so the increase from 120% to 125%, is that the same as, remember, I think last board meeting or the board meeting before, we had raised the Level 1 fees, I think?
Yeah, so the Level 1 fees would remain, as of now, they're still $4.08. We had approved to change those to what the state allocation board adopted. That will change in June. But as of now, they're still $4.08. But whatever the level fees are, we would receive 125% of that once we actually... once we actually issue the bonds on CFD nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, now the CFD nineteen, that's the same one that we've been talking about over the past couple of years, correct? This is the bridge? Emerald Bridge?
Yes, this is Emerald Bridge.
Okay.
And about two hundred and fifteen units that are in this particular Century Communities area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's go ahead and call for the vote. Okay, pass with the five oh vote. Suspensible, wasn't it? We're just getting acclimated to laptops, so there's a little bit of a lag. Okay, next we'll move on to a public hearing session. Hold a public hearing on changes proposed to the authorized facilities bonded indebtedness and rate the method of apportionment of special taxes within the Community Facilities District number nineteen of the Harupa Unified School District. Mrs. Ford?
Thank you. So this is a part of the legal requirements and the reason that we we had you needed you to approve the resolution prior. Now we have to do a public hearing because we did amend and change that CFD number nineteen. So as part of the legal requirements for changing the authorized facilities, the bond indebtedness and rate and method of apportionment of special taxes in CFD nineteen, a public hearing must be held on these proposed changes, including the proposed levy of special taxes and all other matters discussed in the resolution of consideration, which the board adopted on April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. So the, Mrs. Regal, you may open the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open a public hearing session on the changes proposed to the authorized facilities bonded indebtedness and rate of the method of apportionment of special taxes within the facilities district number nineteen of the Harupa Unified School District. Are there any comments from the public?
No, there are not.
Okay, this public hearing session is now formally closed. Can you approve adopt routine action items by consent of one through twenty-six? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, first by trustee Navarro, second by trustee Ditwiler. Are there any questions or comments? No. Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Okay, it's a pass with a five oh vote. Let's see, move on to board member committee reports. We'll start with trustee Navarro.
Okay. So I also attend the CTE meeting. I had to do it virtually. I was not able to do it in person. And for those in the community who doesn't do not know what CTE stands for, it's a Career and Technical Education. It's a STEM pathways at Harupa Valley. High schools are designed to prepare students for careers of the future. The goal is for every student to complete a CTE STEAM pathway to ensure college and career readiness upon graduation. Our STEAM pathways provides hands-on, relevant training and highly employable skills, employable skills specifically for STEAM careers. Upon completion of a pathway, our STEAM students will be employable and contributing members to our community. So the main focus of the meeting was for the stakeholders to kind of give their input. There was five major stakeholders that were in attendance, teachers, industry reps, college partners, special screw groups, and students. Probably one of the most interesting parts was the breakout session that we had. Me, along with other business owners and a few industry leaders and hiring consultants seemed just to be having the same issues when it comes to either hiring or the supply chain. We kind of brainstormed some issues and some ideas on the for the teachers to be able to teach the certain current students to have certain skills to to make them more hireable in today's economy. I think one of our main topics, I think that everyone grew on was just the ability to troubleshoot. I think a lot of times in our businesses and our jobs, we need someone who can think outside the box and troubleshoot. I think a lot of times we get flustered or we give up too easy, and that was one of those skills that we just really stress that teachers is to teach this, you know, problem solving to, you know, when you when one opportunity doesn't present itself, a second opportunity or opportunity could be just as successful. And then I think one of the great things, and confirm me if I'm right, Mrs. Bradford, but I think nineteen percent of JST seniors are going to graduate with a CTA, CTE pathway. Was that correct? Okay. And then we talked about measure E and the end of funding on that one. So there was no new projects currently for that one. And it was great to see the meeting hosted by a young man. He did a really good, really good job in a room full of adults. And I was wish I could have been there in person, but very proud of him seeing there. I'm on the on the Zoom call. So and that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bradford?
I'm glad you're having a speak in tandem to tag team on the Career and Technical Education Committee meeting. Roberta Pace, the Director of College and Career Readiness Program, was very appreciative of the room full of our industry and college partners, as well as the people who joined us by Zoom for the meeting, as well as our teachers and students. So here are some of the statistics that I think will be interesting. Harupa Unified offered twenty-four CTE pathways this year, including three new pathways in performing arts, manufacturing, and cybersecurity. We will add two more pathways next year, one in patient care and one in information and communications technology. Last year, forty-one point seven percent of our high school students, that's nearly half, forty-one point seven percent of our high school students were enrolled in CTE coursework, and fifteen point six percent of the class of two thousand twenty-one were CTE pathway completers. We are on track to see twenty point nine percent of our class of two thousand twenty-two graduates complete a CTE pathway. So when you talk about college and career readiness, CTE, as you can see, is a very important component of preparing JUSD graduates. Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Garcia?
Thank you, President Regal. Nothing, I haven't had any committees. The only thing I wanted to mention to my colleagues here, we have, I'm going to be part of the panel on Wednesday. I'm not sure if it's a Zoom that you can join, but we're going to be talking CSBA, California School Board Association, and it's about setting budget priorities that we can discuss with legislators. So I'll bring you back more info next time on that. And thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thank you.
Trustee Ditwiler?
I have no meetings to report on.
Okay, thank you. I will be attending the District Advisory Council meeting the beginning of June, so I think it's two to three weeks. I couldn't tell you specifically because I saw a calendar invite and just made mental note that it's coming. I'm sorry, it's the end of the year, so there's so many things going on. Just one real quick, and I did neglect to mention there were so many things to cover. I skipped over a couple of items, but while we were in DC, if you recall, last year, we were selecting Legislative Representatives of the Year through California School Board Association. And Congressman Tukano was selected and was awarded this annual event, but it's very rare that we get a Congress level receiving that award. So it was really great to be in DC and to be part of the award. Handing him the award, it was some artwork from students within Harupa Unified School District that created the artwork. So I didn't get a close up to it because it was kind of fast. But, you know, just so great that the uniqueness of our students and their work is resonating into the Office of Congress. And then also, as I was hearing through, trying to memorize, I literally made a mental note and put these in front of me, and I forgot to mention the students ad came and gave us recognition for donating those yearbooks, but they they came up with beautiful artwork. This is the front of the the yearbooks of each school. So I love looking at them and just their individual school personality. This is great that the entire board this year has opted to donate that you, so each school is going to receive five additional yearbooks. And then they're going to come up, I don't even know their full process, but they will be given to students that potentially could not afford it, but might have been somebody that earned one. And so five students at each school will be receiving those. So it's great to see. And that is all I have. Dr. Hanson, would you like to add any final comments?
Yes, just like to update the board that on last Friday, mid the twenty-ninth, April twenty-ninth, I was able to meet with RCCD and some local officials, our mayor, city officials, as well as the California Labor Secretary regarding the Inland Empire Technical Trade Center that is being proposed on being built here in in Harupa Valley through RCC. So that was a great opportunity to to meet with her and to show the collaboration that is taking place among a variety of different agencies and organizations. And then obviously for us to show our support as the local school district here in the city. And so I just wanted to update the board that that was the latest in those developments, but that work still will need to continue to move forward. So that's it. Thank you again for all your work, and I want to thank all of those that were here tonight and working in the in the background to make sure that this meeting was able to take place. So thank you for all of your help and support.
Yes, thank you. I mean, we're getting the hang of the transitions. Not that we don't have laptop experience, but I think over the years of just getting used to an iPad transitioning. But we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven forty-five. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your interest and involvement in our students' well-being. Continue to be safe. This